Everybody clear your eyes? I don't care. I'm gonna leave this in vacation. And Councilor Wright's gonna leave this in pledge, please. Please, all your heads. Heavenly Father, pray that you be with us tonight and we make some great decisions for the city of Sanibel. We pray for the people of the city of Sanibel and for everybody in our state and country. Pray for our soldiers and civilians overseas in the hardest way. Just we pray in the most holy name of your son Jesus, amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a seat. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Councilman Wright, thank you for coming here to visit with us. Always good to see you. And... Ah, now we can really get started. All right. I should say welcome to all the people out there on Facebook. There's probably a few out there today. Okay. First thing we have, I think...
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move down the ad to the agenda. I'd like to move down the ad, Chief Duncan, Chief Duncan, to give us a point of information on purchase of these vehicles.
Okay, I'll motion, I have a second.
Second.
All right. Throw a comment. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that police form of information will be item number three. The other items will change to four, five, or six. All right. I don't believe we have any public comments at all. Okay.
Okay, we need to follow.
Yeah. We set up so you... That's okay. You were here when we did it. Come on up.
Randall Wright, want to wait till junior drive. Tonight, I left my house at ten minutes to five. And in the past, there's been an agenda on your city page. The last four months, it's hit and miss. I called, system's down. Within ten minutes or an hour, it's up. And it's on the agenda. Mayor, when you took office, you said open door policy and transparency. If you can't print that out on your webpage, that's not transparency. I mean, what's the problem? You get it to the paper on Friday. How come they can't put it on the webpage so people know what's going to be talked about? And, I mean, that's all of it. I'm not on the agenda, so I can't talk about anything else. But I got a list tonight, I'll be back next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item here is adopt some of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes. June the 7th, 2022 is our regular council meeting. And June the 21st, 2022, council work session. I'll entertain motion here to...
That's rare that we adopt these minutes as printed with the caveat that we can't update them if there are errors.
Okay, have a motion, have a second.
Second motion.
In discussion, anybody see anything? Hear none? Call for the question, all the favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Both sets of minutes are passed. All right, now, there is the old business tonight, new business, we have police form of information.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. On last budget year, we discussed trading in the last six of the files that we had online. But it was decided we do three last year and three this year. Councilman Evans made a statement that we would be doing it in three months, which was three months before this budget year came in. The budget year came into our first, and that time has come. And those vehicles are in stock now. I just wanted to let council know that the vehicles are starting to weigh the purchase. And I told Ms. Carroll already that the money is for the purchases already in the budget and ready to go.
Can you play any comments, folks? Let's see some nice moves out of the vehicles we call.
Yes, and those are the last three of the old titles.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you.
Good news, good news. Okay, next item here is a home-based business. Jeremy Johnson, the owner, United Square Collins Avenue, San Antonio, Georgia, 31028. Councilman Bird, please.
Yes, this is a handyman business. The business will be based in Mr. Johnson's home, but not customers don't come to that location. He goes to them. So there would be no extra traffic or anything in the same neighborhood. And with that, I think that this would be a great business for us to up in the city. And I'd love to move that we fund this new business.
Okay, have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Now a second. Any further discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. And I know you're not here, Mr. Johnson, but welcome to the city park business department. Always great to have somebody else there. All right, item number five is the proposed council over departments. And I sent everybody a list of proposals. And I said it was proposed. So, which means if anybody thinks or wants to change this whole thing, we can discuss it now. I have no issues, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I have no issues. Okay. Okay, then. Do was going to read, yeah, I'll go ahead and call for motion.
I move that we adopt the proposed council over departments as proposed by Mayor Earl. Second.
Motion and a second. So we'll discuss it, so all favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Hear none? The proposed council of departments is now the lead council of departments. Water and Sewer, you have Councilman Bird. With Secretary, Councilman Evans. Fire Department, Councilman Evans. Secretary, Councilman Amijo. Police Department, Councilman Amijo. Secretary, Councilman Wright. Administration, Councilman Wright. Secretary is Councilman Evans. Economic Development is Councilman Wright. And Secretary is Councilman Bird. Okay. Then, next item here is item number six, 2022. The bill is ready for approval to proceed. Councilman Bird and City Councilor Harrison, please.
I'll turn over to the City Councilor Harrison.
You'll get that little filter message again.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I do have a presentation, but I do have, there's two sets of forms within your packet. The first set is, I'm gonna talk about those first, and then I'll go to this presentation. That's just about six slides. In the folder tonight, you will see a PT 32.1, which really, this is the computation of the millage rate rollback. And just a couple of things on this form that I just want to point out to you. On the far right of the PT 32.1, we have the 2022 digest. The gross digest is $267,834,164, which is about a $30 million increase due to the reassessment of the existing real property. I'm not on that slide just yet, I'm sorry. I see some confused looks. I'm looking at this form right here, right now.
It's in your packet.
Yeah. I haven't gone to that slide yet, we'll get there in just two seconds. So anyway, the gross digest has grown by 30 million. The exemptions, which really are BA, free port exemption, personal property, and senior, those have grown by about 8 million. And our net digest has grown by 30 million, or is $227,371,080. The rollback millage rate based on this consolidated digest provided by the county is 10.364. The page right behind that is just the proposed or the potential tax digest in five-year history for 2022, depending on what millage rate is adopted. Of course, at the current rate, if you look to the far right column under 2022, and if we keep the current millage rate, the taxes levy would be 2.7 million, which would be about $329,000 more than 2021. And then, there's another piece of paper with some computations right after that five-year levy in history. And that just kind of gives a comparison of the property taxes on a $100,000 home. At the rollback rate, it would be $414.56. And at the current rate, if that was kept, would be $477.76, which would be an increase or a difference of $63.20. So now, I'm just gonna jump to the presentation, and then we'll come back to this form if there's any questions. So, really, on the presentation, I really just kind of wanted to give us a history of what our property taxes have been since 2012. And I did a two-year interval for 2012, 14, 16, 18. And then I went each consecutive year from 2019, 2020, 21, and 22. And this slide would shows us what the property taxes would be for 2022. If we did adopt the rollback rate, the property taxes would be $2,356,464. And that would be equate to approximately about $19,000 more than the 2012 property taxes. So with the rollback rate, we'd be about, our property tax revenue potentially would be $19,000 more than what it was in 2012. The next slide, this is just now using the current rate. If we kept the current rate, of course, we already said the 2022 property taxes would be $2,715,000 or $329,000 more than 2021. And just something else to note as we look at this chart is that our property taxes have been pretty flat or constant since 2012. The next slide just kind of looks at our exemptions. Our exemptions for 2022 are 40 million. That consists of our BA exemptions, our free port, our personal property, and our senior exemption. Exemptions have increased about 22 million since 2012, or 124%. The next slide just really kind of looks at the assessed value of our senior exemptions. In 2012, the assessed value was $16,101,000. In 2022, the assessed value is $30,392,000. So we've had probably about an increase of 14 million or 88% since 2012. As, another thing to point out, as the county reassessed property across the board, that also, of course, increasing their exemption through reassessment for those. This slide just kind of shows the dollar amount of our senior exemptions. In 2012, it was $192,000. In 2022, it's gonna be $363,000, which is about $170,000 increase from 2012. And then the last slide, you've all seen this before from the budget. This is just kind of history of the millage rate. And, you know, at this point in time, y'all have not proposed what the adoption of the millage rate was. But if we left it at 11.944, that's what that chart would reflect. So that was just, that's all I've got as far as like the presentation. Just kind of wanted to give a little bit of the history. I know many of you have kind of looked at this year. And as you look at this year and the point in time and the rollback rate, you know, our revenue would be somewhat equivalent to what our budget, or we would be able to make our budget with that. Now, I would just want to kind of go back to this form right here. And it kind of shows again at the very bottom the current rate, which is 11.944. And I know there's been some concern about increasing property taxes that much. And do we really need the full 329,000? So I also looked at some options. Option one is if the millage rate changed by 10%. Option two, if it changed by 5%. There's a break even. And then the rollback rate, who we talked about, there'd be a loss of $30,000. I did want to just point out a couple of things as we also talk about, or as Mayor and Council discusses. In the last two budgets in fiscal year 2021, we did have CARES Act money of $412,000. For 2022, we had ARPA money of $341,000, which was eligible to go into our operating budget. We'll have another 314 for 2023 and 2024. In 2025, that will go away. So just some information there. And tonight, what I'm doing, I'm looking for direction from Mayor and Council. Because if we do, if we adopt anything other than the rollback rate of 10.364, it would be considered a property tax increase. We're required to do a press release. We're required to do an advertisement for notice of increase of property taxes in three public hearings. So if we just, if Mayor Council decides to do that, then there's a timeline as far as getting the articles in the paper and doing the public hearings before adoption.
Two things I get out of that have pretty well been flat, collecting taxes in the last 10 years.
Yes, sir, that's absolutely correct.
Yeah, everything is going up, expenses going up, unemployment going up. And Councilman Wright mentioned about a month or so ago that we need to stop taking money from the water and sewer sanitation areas. Because that's how we balance the budget all our time here. We've got confusion, in other words, by doing that. Because if we have something major happen in the water and sewer area, we need to go into that.
We have to use some water and sewer money, yes, sir.
We do a lot. Good purposes, I mean, it wasn't good things.
Right, oh, absolutely.
We wouldn't make a decision without it. Yeah, that's the two things I got out of that.
Since you brought me in there, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So, I think we're talking about kind of three separate issues of the information that you presented tonight. One, you have the issue of the senior tax exemption, which I think is a much broader conversation than affects this specific budget issue we're dealing with right now. And it sounds like it might be something that we need to be turning our attention to towards 2025, with that ARPA money and all the CARES Act money is going away. It is pretty close to a dollar amount, see what we're losing on senior exemption right now. I think in terms of what we're doing with the millage rate right now, I don't think we need to be looking at it in terms of what does the county do, and what is this doing? What is, what have we done in the past? The Budget Committee did an excellent job of putting together what is a pretty tight, pretty concise budget for this year. And I think the goal for us setting the millage rate should be to generate the revenue that is going. And regardless of what is, what percentage the county's calling for, whatever, if that's, if that can be done with a rollback, that's great. If it can be done by keeping it the same, that's fine. If we were to leave the current, the millage rate as it is with this new assessment from the county and all that, what would be our revenue compared to what our budget is?
Well, our budget...
I thought you sent in an email this week, it was $30,000 shortfall, which I want some change?
Well, yes, that's correct. It would be, well, it'd be $30,000 less than prior year. And our budgeted revenues, and I did send an email to Councilman and Bird, is about for property taxes, 2.4 million.
So if, with this adjustment that the county has sent out, if we were to leave our millage rate exactly as it is, we would come in $32,000 short?
Yeah, if we, if we...
$32,000 change, that's if we adopt the rollback.
That's right, right.
I think that's, that's something that the council needs to consider. I would hope that, because if we don't adopt the rollback, we have to, that is, what is legally, as stated, Georgia considers a tax increase. We have to list it in the newspapers, and we have to have several public hearings. And gentlemen, that is a lot of headache and hassle for $32,000 when I bet we could... I want to ask a question, could that $32,000 be absorbed in the overall? What is the overall budget, $14 million in...
The overall budget is $14 million. But I don't know that in a year where we have such high inflation that I would...
I was under the impression that the Budget Committee had taken some of that into account when we were setting the budget this year.
As far as the inflation?
Yeah. To a small extent, especially as regard to fuel costs.
Yeah.
We really rely on the departments to establish their own numbers. And we just kind of did, and we just make sure that those were, that we consider reasonable. So it sounds to me like we have two different issues here. One of them that we have not set out yet is we're discussing whether or not we think with inflation and with the current market that we're gonna go dramatically over budget this year.
Well, I don't think we're gonna go dramatically over budget. I just think in a year where we have precedent inflation, for us to leave $329,000 on the table might not be the best thing.
We're leaving it in the checkbooks of people that are experiencing the same inflation.
I do know that we will experience an increase in our health insurance of about 9%. And that was the open enrollment, which is November. I do know that, I'm not sure what Mayor and Council's direction is gonna be on OPEB. I know that will be, that will be an increase in our budget. You know, and I know there's been conversation about the need to increase staff in certain departments. So those are just some things to take into consideration.
But those weren't currently budgeted?
Those were not currently budgeted.
Some of those may be more budgeted, maybe fire them. Sure.
But I know that it's been, you know, as we look two to three years out, I think staff needed is maybe multiple, two or three.
Well, sure, but I think that we're talking about the long-term ramifications of what appears to be a very short-term problem. The people that are, our citizens that are struggling with these high prices of gas prices and everything else aren't worried about what the prices are gonna be in three years, they're worried about next month. And so I wonder if it is worth it for us to consider, you know, just because we can, you know, levying this $350,000, because it would make it much easier on us. But it is not necessarily the best role of government to make it easy on themselves when they can make it easy on citizens. So I think that that's something that, that's something that needs to factor into this. There's just ways where it's gonna hurt us probably. And the mayor said, I've been the first one to say we need to stop using water and sewer like a credit card. But if the, if the purpose of using it is to benefit a tax increase on top of what is a very difficult financial time, that's, to me, a much better use of those funds than we got some stuff we want to buy and stuff we want to build. So that, I don't know.
I don't think it's all about the money to buy and the money to build. I think it's about providing services that we provide.
Sure.
That's what all the revenue is for, whether, whether, whether it's a rollback rate, or whether it stays the same, or whether it's a tax increase. Revenue is used for that. And then, if it's not used this year, then it's put back in budget to be used next year.
So I asked Ms. Harrison to provide some additional in-between numbers. And she actually, I asked for one, and she provided three in-between numbers. And that, which is, you know, excellent and beyond. We should maybe be thinking about one of those rather than... Some people are arguing that they want to keep the current rate. And some say, oh, let's go with the rollback rate, maybe somewhere in the middle. It's still considered a tax increase, but maybe somewhere in that, one of those other three options would be the best way to go if that's the case. It doesn't have to be one or the other.
Can you share all those?
Absolutely.
You don't have to share right now.
They're on the bottom, they're on the bottom of this sheet. There's four numbers across the bottom here.
They are on the bottom of that schedule. So that first column is the current rate of 11.944. Taxes levied, 2.7 million. We've already discussed that that would be an additional $63 in taxes to a homeowner with a $100,000 home. The next column where it says 10%, option one. If we adopted a millage rate of 11.4004, the property taxes levied would be 2.5 million. And the increase to the homeowner of a $100,000 home would be $41.46 above the rollback rate. And then the next column is 5%, option two. If we adopted a millage rate of 10.882, the taxes levied would be $2,474,000, which would still be $87,000 more than 2021. And the increase to a homeowner with a $100,000 home would be $20.73.
I'll look at some of the things that I think the city needs for the taxpayers out there. I know we need a new fire truck. All right, Chief? Do you need a tanker? Tell what it is. How much does that cost?
$600,000.
Okay, which is twice what the tax increase would be, right? We have no plans running out of oil, we don't need, until we have the money set aside for it. How many more people do we, you need over there in order to increase our, our rate, hiring? Four, four more people? We're getting one this year, or you got one this year. So we need four more in addition. We're getting one this year, or you got one this year, but, so we need four more in addition. Now, we benefit the citizens directly, right?
Yes.
I know we can't get four, and I'm just saying like, the needs that we have. And the police department, uh, how many more police officers do you need over the next two years? We've got to start planning for it. About four?
Four, yes, sir.
At least four, you said?
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm thinking too, you know, that's over the next four years. We're going to see some significant growth in the city over the next four years, but that growth will result in some additional taxes eventually. But one of the problems with the taxes in there is that you can have more people come in, so you have more taxes coming out there, but you don't really see it here because of the, we take the rollback. But that's why we've been staying, uh, pretty well balanced on the amount of money we got every year, about two point two million, whatever, out there every year for the last ten years. Somehow we've made it work.
I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate what you mean about we do need to plan for long-term growth. I think all our department heads do a good job of that. But I also think that in, in, if our reason for wanting to adopt this larger rate is because inflation has made things very tough, uh, on our government that has the ability to compel people to pay this money whether they want to or not, that, then it, it doesn't seem.
That wasn't what I said.
I, I, I don't think that's what you're saying, I, I won't, I won't say that, but what I would say is.
I would love to be able to run the city without money too. I mean, if, if that makes sense, it takes revenue. Um, the, the cost of things are going up for everybody, including the government.
I understand that, I just don't know that the source for inflation, the, the, the solution for inflation for the average family in Centerville is a tax increase. You know, uh, and if it is possible for us to make it through this budget year without it, I think we should. Um, because what we, we, we can project all we want, we are, this is a very, I think the economic outlook is fairly uncertain. Is that fair to say, if you're trying to watch that bullseye? Nobody, an economist's word is not worth a dime right now, because nobody knows what is, what is coming.
Wrong.
And so, um, you know, I, I don't know that it's, I think we should be very cautious in looking to increase taxes at, at, at this particular time just because we think we might need the cushion. Uh, I understand that that is, and I'm not, I don't want this to sound like I'm being antagonistic towards a city accountant. Harrison, it is her job to come in and say, hey, we need more money, that's what the accountant is supposed to do. I recognize that, but, uh.
Well, no, I'm not necessarily saying we need more money, I'm just saying that for us to sustain for the future, and I know we do have some growth that will have to happen, um, that we just have to make sure that we can sustain that because, as Councilman Evans said, we want to make sure we can provide all those services to the citizens. Um, one other small point of information I just want to give to the mayor and council. Um, I, I kind of went back to our twenty twelve financial statements and just looked at our general fund, unassigned fund balance and our water and sewer unrestricted net position. Um, in twenty twelve, the general fund unassigned fund balance was two point seven million. Um, at the end of twenty twenty-two, it's two point one million. We're still in good shape, that's still a good five months' reserve. But, you know, as our taxes are flat over the net prior ten years, our, we have been using some of our fund balance, we have. Um, for that water and sewer unrestricted net position in twenty twelve, it was three point seven million. Um, in twenty twenty-two, it's three point one million. So again, we're still in good shape, we still meet our six-month reserve requirement, we still meet, um, the one point five million for future water and sewer infrastructure. But again, we have used some of our fund balance, you know, over, over the last ten years.
How much fund balance have we used over the last ten years? Of the, I'm sorry, of the water and sewer funds?
Uh, six hundred and twenty-four. Or, or how much have we used?
That was last year's.
That was last year. How much have we used all that time period?
Well, the, the change from three point.
I know what the change is.
Okay.
How much did we actually use?
Well, we've probably have used a good two million, I would say, because we, we built the utility complex and that was fully funded. We've used, um, probably two to two point five million, I'd say, because we used some for the park. Um, so, yeah. The, the good thing about our water and sewer fund is that it, it does replenish itself. It gets slowly, slowly, if we, if we can't leave it alone, it does slowly replenish.
It does better, but I think it's a whole lot more money than that, because I think the, um, water and sewer place we put out there was over two million dollars. Is that correct, Mike?
Uh, it was one point seven.
One point seven million. You know, we did six hundred thousand, we pulled out of last year, you said.
Uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-two?
Twenty twenty-one.
Uh, twenty twenty-one, we pulled out three hundred thousand from water and sewer. And we also had, um.
How much was it, twenty twenty?
Oh, I'm sorry, for twenty twenty-one, I'm looking at my wrong column here.
She's talking about fiscal year two, so when she says twenty-two, she means last year.
Right. This one year.
Yeah. Um. Yeah. Prior year, we pulled out quite a bit because we completed construction of the, there's probably one point three million.
Just that year?
Yes.
So that's more than two million, you were saying, two million is just for that one thing? But you add all these increments.
Each year, each year, it's probably two and a half.
Seven million dollars, I'll bet, so you're getting up in there. Maybe not that much, but at least three more million.
Uh, yeah, I have to, I have to pull in any of that, I, but I'd say, um.
We just pulled a lot.
Two and a half, yeah, we have, we have, we have a good bit.
I got you.
So, um, you know, my comment is that I know that, um, the water and sewer fund is used by every city, right? That's what they use to balance the budgets, right? Uh, I don't think by any stretch of the imagination that anyone here has used that fund or tried to, that, you know, used more than that funding than they needed. I think we used what we, what we had.
Nobody's saying that, we, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Uh, I think that, um, I know that we're going to grow, I know that we're going to need more folks in all our departments. And I, and I think going forward, you know, that's why we have a Budget Committee and they sit down and decide what growth is going to be occurring in the next few years. It's the reason why we have, uh, our offsite to sit down and talk about these types of things and plan for them, right? Because this opportunity is here for us to increase the, uh, our taxes and income, uh, income to the city. I, I'm not certain that, um, I know that, that the citizens themselves, they're going to want to know, uh, where we use it, what, we're going to tax them. Where's this tax money going to go, who's going, how we're going to use it, right? And so, uh, knowing that, listening to, uh, Ms. Carroll speak, she's mentioned that basically we're, we're pretty good till twenty twenty-five. We're sitting well with the, uh, reserve funds at this point, right? So, I mean, there's no.
The long, long thing's standing, right?
There, there, I mean, everything's, everything's okay, right? Going forward till twenty twenty-five, then at twenty twenty-five, then, you know, then, then we've got another, you know, we may have something to, to talk about that part about, you know. And I know the conversation's come up a hundred times about tenure, uh, senior tax exemptions and all these other tax exemptions. And so what we do need to figure out going forward, you know, how we, you know, and I know we've got more, uh, we're going to have all these new housing coming up and income coming, you know, coming from there as well. But I'm just, I'm just concerned of, of, is this, you know, is this the right time with considering how the country's going, how inflation is going, recession and all these other patterns and terms that are flying around us every day? There are families out there who are, who are living paycheck to paycheck. And, uh, and, and we're living paycheck to paycheck here. I, I understand that, I know, I see when we do the budget that we're like right on the, you know, we, we don't have any extra money to, to, like, to spend. But, uh, but I think it's, I think it's, um, I don't know, I just don't want to see this, uh, you know, take too much, you know, do too, do too much to this, because I think that, uh, again, this is, this is a good time to talk about it, certainly. Uh, and the presentation is very clear that we have several options that are clear to us and, uh, you know, sort of like the break even option. But, you know, again, it's, it's something that we as a mayor and council have to vote on, what, what we want to do.
Chief Jones, would you happen to know roughly what we had budgeted in the fire department this year for mechanical contingencies?
For what now?
Mechanical contingencies to do repairs, if we have a fire truck go down, or what?
I want to say it's around fifty-four thousand.
Yeah, yeah, that's a little bit of a cut, it used to be around seventy.
No, it hasn't cut, it's actually gone up.
It's gone up a little bit, okay, yes.
It's gone up because of the age of our apparatus.
Sure, yeah.
For putting more money in.
And, uh, Chief Duncan, I'm sure we have similar line items in the police department where you got?
I have my repair man, because I have one twenty.
Yeah, and, and we haven't, last, last year, did we use the entire repair man to budget?
Oh, sir.
Yeah. Mike, similar, similar numbers to your department? So, my point would be, I, I think that our, all of our department heads have done an excellent job. And if, if calamity happens and we have to blow every down of those and, and we're still, if we blow every drop of the budget and, and we, we, we still come up thirty thousand dollars short, then, um, that is not a, a large enough and frightening enough number to consider a tax increase in the current economic climate. Uh, I do think that, that there is an impulse to take three hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and then blame it on the county. Uh, but, uh, I, I think this is the case where we can, um, I think we can make it through with the current budget that we have. Uh, I know we all want to hire new people, and there's a lot of folks in the budget, but, I mean, we've had empty positions in departments long before this budget. So I think that's a separate conversation, uh, as you talk about budgeting and moving forward. Uh, I, I think the, the wisest course at this time is to adopt this rollback and to, to look, to eat that thirty thousand, twenty-six dollars, uh, spread over a number of departments. Uh, what do we have, twelve different departments?
Uh, fourteen.
Fourteen different departments.
In the general fund, but then, of course, we've got the water and sewer fund, sanitation, twenty-one.
I'll do math as well as you care, I'll say it like that. Roughly twenty-two hundred bucks per department, you know? I think if you, you were to say, should we, should we look at doing a tax increase on the citizens in the highest inflation since the last time the Georgia Bulldogs won a championship? Or should we consider the possibility that every department has to look at twenty-two hundred bucks? I think that is a much better service to the city. But again, that, the, the rest of the council mayor may differ, but that is, uh, that's, that's where I'm at, unless somebody can convince me otherwise.
And I, I don't think we need to use scare tactics either, um, on this issue. We keep saying tax increase, tax increase, tax increase. Yeah, it brings in more revenue. The miller's rate, it stays the same, brings in more revenue because of property taxes. Or there are more properties for the city. I don't know how many more properties we have in the city this year than we did last year, but I doubt we have a few. So that also contributes to that increase. But we have, we have all of these options here, all of them but one, which requires to advertise a tax increase. I don't have a problem advertising a tax increase and talking to people and explaining to them what's going on, what we can do there. Or we can just, you know, fall back, everybody's struggling, my bills are gone, your bills are gone. Um, and, and, and we're not here to try to make it worse for anybody, but we're here to provide services to the citizens that we promised them. Okay, none of this free, so we, we've got to think about that.
Carol, let me ask you a question. If, uh, if there was, if there's no change in the tax digest because of, uh, increasing values, okay? But we have the increase in number of homes in the city.
Mm-hmm.
All right? Now, now we show up as a, um, we had to do a rollback to get back to the previous thing. All the new houses, though, where the money coming from that is actually given right back to the citizens if we do the rollback.
I would say yes, yeah.
That's everybody's taxes, every time we do it, every year.
Yeah.
So, so what I'm trying to say here is that, uh, this three hundred some thousand dollars, some of that is for all the new houses we've gotten in the last year.
There's a lot of variables that go into.
They need to fair share, that can be too.
The reassessment, reassessment of the existing property was, um, thirty million dollars.
Right.
Um, other changes to the tax digest for real property was an increase of five point four million. So that could be attributed to any new construction that we've had, yeah. We've also had an increase in mobile homes, we've got, um, uh, an increase there of five hundred ninety-nine thousand, an increase in personal property. Model vehicles have gone down, heavy equipment has disappeared, and timber has, we, we've got timber this year where we didn't in the prior year. So all, all those things, you know, um, are variables over the rollback, right?
So, basically what we've done by keeping, have a rollback to the last three years when we did. All the new people coming into the city, basically, their taxes, everybody got loaded into the city because of the new people coming to the city.
Well, we've kind of spread it around, is what you're saying.
Yeah. We spread what taxes were around. I mean, it's a hard concept to get into your head, but it's, it's actually there.
Right, as, as the, as the digest does increase, then, um, for us to obtain, of course, the same amount of property taxes, the miller's rate goes down. Exactly.
Well, one thing we could do is say this, this, this is go through, uh, two meetings and see what happens. Because even though we say, like, we'll do something, we always change our minds and, you know, after.
That's true, if you, if you, uh.
If you go lower than what we're saying, we can do that and then have to go back out and put in more.
Right, after we do our advertisement for a notice of property tax increase, if Mayor and Council feels like they don't want to go that high, correct?
Well, what, what I'm saying is, uh, we'll just advertise it, we'll just advertise it, and at the end of the two meetings, we'll make a decision on what we're going to do. So we'll make a decision at the end of the two meetings for the last, say, for five or something. Uh, we make that decision, then, then we wouldn't have to go out and re-advertise it, because we would have, you know, offered or putting out a lower rate, is that right?
I would say yes.
All right, and so, Mayor, I, I believe that we approve the, uh, the advertisement of a tax increase with the understanding that we don't want to actually perform that tax.
It could be a clarification as to whether or not we have to advertise the rate, I believe we have to advertise this specific rate.
We do have to advertise.
You can't just have an advertisement without deciding which one we're going to want.
We do have to stay if we want to go at current rate.
I'd like to amend my, my motion to, uh, to say the cur, the current miller's rate.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion is second.
All right.
Did we discuss it enough?
So, so this is a motion to move forward in the process to increase the tax rate to eleven point nine four four.
No, this is a motion to let the tax rate remain at eleven.
Okay, you're, you're correct, yeah, you're correct, yeah, you're, you're correct. I mean, it, it, it does constitute a tax increase, but I understand, I understand what you're saying, you know.
But the understanding that we're not actually approved that tax increase for only.
Yeah, it's just a.
I think it's just, I think that the, the purpose of having the public hearing is to move to adopt. And, and so if, if you want to, if you want to put it out for public comment or something and do that, you know, last public period, but I, I think that, that there's, when you, when you move forward in this process, you were, you were saying that the governing body is, that our intent is to leave the miller's rate at eleven point nine four four, is that correct?
I would say yes, that, that, you know, I, I'm not saying it's not unprecedented that when it comes time to adopt, that Mayor Council says, well, let's not do that, let's go lower, but yes, I would say that's correct.
Mayor, I, I don't think, I don't personally believe that that is the best course of action. And if, if the, the rest of the council wants to move that way, that is totally acceptable, we, we don't all have to agree on every thing. But if the, the result of this motion is that, it is the intent of the mayor and council to adopt that eleven point nine four four miller's rate, then I'm, again, the motion's on forward, we want to, but I'm, I'm going to have to go against it.
And that's what the motion says, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Tom, call for the vote, all fairs say aye.
Aye.
All vote, same sign?
Aye.
Three to.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Mayor Council, and I will proceed with that.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Now, we have accomplished, uh, council, um, I want, I'll, I'll wait for that. Okay, both one please. Okay, both one please.
Um, I just wanna thank Ms. Harrison for preparing all this information. I know I didn't really understand. We did it last year. Uh, it was easier last year. I didn't really understand, uh, everything, but I was quite clear after she, she, after I had received this information, that's a happy year, and I just wanna, uh, hopefully thank her for that, uh, knowledge that she's able to share with us.
She did a great job, I have to admit that. I mean, it was really good detail. Both two?
Uh, all the other people can get more details on it, but I just wanna shout out to all of the various departments that came together to make the Fourth of July celebration. It was fantastic. Made it right through the Taifun and everything, had a fantastic Fourth of July. Great job, everybody.
Good, good weather control. Both three?
Just to, to piggyback on that, uh, last we were out there, and the rain attempted to, uh, to come in, and you saw people starting to leave, but the good thing about it was people were still coming. So, uh, you know, we had great crowd, uh, kudos to everybody who was involved. I know it was a lot of hard work, always is, but, uh, it's great to go out there and see the fruits of your labor, and, uh, so we had a great time, you know?
Thank you very much. Both four please.
Yes, uh, sorry, I'd like to compliment everybody, the, all the departments. I mean, it was, I, I seen everybody out there working. I mean, every, uh, department head, all employees, I seen, you know, people were all out there setting up, cleaning up, doing everything. I mean, it takes a lot to put on something like that, and, uh, and I know that the, uh, the folks that attended really appreciated everything, uh, and, uh, and it's good that, that we're out there, you know, because we are always out there supporting any activity that the city does, and so, uh, it's nice to see everybody enjoy themselves out there. And, uh, so it's, I went to the farmer's market again this weekend. The farmer's market was, uh, it was fun. They got, you know, they got a big old yogurt class over there, and they had all kinds of salads out there, so we're still looking for people who are.
How was the yogurt last?
There you go. I mean, I, I, I'm gonna try that one day, but I just got, had no strength to go up there. But, um, but I tell you one thing, though, is that they do need help at the recycle center for volunteers. Uh, recycle center, and, and I, and it's kinda funny because you see, not just citizens, but all kinds of people coming, everybody that comes here, every time they drive in there, they always say, thank you for the recycle center, all the time, and so, and I'm, and I'm one of the guys that sometimes I have to be careful, I go home with more than what I, what I left with, send my recycling there, in some ways I always got something I'm like, hey, wait a minute. So, uh, but it's a lot of fun out there, you get to meet a lot of people, and, and so anybody who's interested in volunteering, uh, feel free to stop by the recycle center on Tuesdays, Thursdays, or Saturdays and, and talk to the folks there that are helping get, uh, trained up, and it's a volunteer thing, so, uh, always looking for people who need volunteer hours, those, those types of things. Plug in for Boy Scout Trip four hundred, they need, uh, more scouts, and so we're gonna be hitting up the schools as they open up, looking for scouts, anybody who's interested, uh, young folks that are interested in, in a great, uh, great program, and so that's all I got. Oh, sorry, Thursday, the Lions Club's doing their blood drive.
Oh, okay.
So if anybody knows anybody who's, like to share their blood, bring it on.
I don't have any FPD without blood right now.
Yeah.
Summer, uh, period is, is very difficult when people go out and give blood.
Yes, it's right here at the road, at the, uh, Lions Club.
I used to give blood all the time. I did it in Cal. Then I went to England.
Oh, can you?
Can't give it anymore. Bad cal disease, you said. They don't think I had it, but they just said that, like, you could have had it, could be your blood, all right? Uh, I only got a couple things, you're, you're right there, Four to Loud, that was just outstanding. I think it was the best we ever had, it was well organized and well put together, uh, but I did, the other thing I do need to apologize to our citizens for one thing, that some of the people who visited left trash in places that the city wasn't really responsible for, but they still went and left trash, and we're gonna have to address that in the future somehow, about how we're gonna do it. I have to apologize for the businesses over there who had that problem. And, again, I can't emphasize enough, the recycling, we really need some help over there. Uh, best time, I, I worked there at least two times a month, sometimes more if I can. Best time for me is toward the end of the month, but I don't have quite as much on my plate then. That was good, and, uh, you know, the Museum of Aviation had an auction the past Saturday night. It was a green auction. I had to be the chairman of the auction committee. It was a really great auction out there, and the city of Centerville represented, we had a basket of things even sent out there, and it was quite a bit of money. I'm very, very pleased with that, and I thank everybody who anticipated doing that too, because that was, uh, that's a great event, we have to keep that museum going. Okay, anybody have anything else? Hear nothing? Council meeting's over.